The June 17 meeting of the Anaronda County Council is now in session. We'd ask that you please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Hare will lead us in the invocation this evening.
Good evening, please bow with me. Dear God, we are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Amen.
Councilwoman Fiedler will introduce our special guests this evening that will be helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to welcome Troop 855 from Severna Park, if you don't mind coming to the front and leading us in the pledge. Thank you for being here tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again, everyone. We're going to start off by, Madam Secretary, could you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now at this portion of the meeting and invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks are limited to two minutes. As I call your name, please come forward, and what you'll do is you'll take a seat and state your name and address for the record, and there's a timer up here that has the two minutes. I do have three people on the list, Mr. David Curtick, Mr. David Dull, and Mr. Jonathan Curtis. If you all would come forward, please. And, Mr. Curtick, if you would just go first, state your name, address, and then two minutes. Yep.
My name's Dave Curtick. I live at 610 Warblers Perchway in Tannard Springs, in the newest section of Tannard Springs along Solly Road. A couple of things that I'm concerned about. One is the dangerous driving just adjacent to Solly Elementary School. That's a school where young children walk back and forth to school every day. There's speeding, passing on a double solid line, people even pulling out from the parking lot itself with the school out onto Solly Road, right into traffic. The traffic rules should be enforced, and cars and trucks speed on Solly Road all hours, even when school's not in session. Just south of Solly Elementary, there was a section of Solly Road that was last year rebuilt, regraded, and repaved, supposedly to make it safer. That smoothed it out, and that made the speeding even worse. As a side note, that part that was just, we spent a lot of money on, for the Highway Department to repave that, was just ripped up by a contractor. Also, where I live at Tannard Springs, there's a lot of trespassing on our private street, even though the street is clearly marked that there is no trespassing and no soliciting. These people going up and down the street, knocking on doors, ringing doorbells. It was suggested to us that we call the police. Four times, we've called the police on this same trespasser. A week later, he's back there. They just laugh at me. The one guy laughed at me and said, "Oh, you don't like it? Call the police." We did. The police never come, they've never come out. These people continue to do that. So if somebody could do something about that, because we deserve enforcement at Tannard Springs, too. Thank you.
Mr. Curtick, have you spoken with, oh, I'm sorry. Have you spoken with anybody, like the Police Department and other things, or are you a part of the Homeowners Association?
I participate in the homeowners' meetings. I spoke to, a couple of years ago, where I live, there was an Anaronda County Police Officer who lives there, and she told me that no trespassing, no soliciting sign is unenforceable.
Okay. All right. Well, I know there's folks here from the administration, and hopefully they follow up with you, and I would encourage you also. I don't know, Solly and Northern District, I believe, Councilman Volkey, that they have annual meetings, or, you know, Second Wednesday, Lake Western, to attend that as well. So, that'd be good. Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify, I think Mr. Chair is referring to Police Community Relations?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so the Police Community Relations Council, where you are, I believe, is Northern District, because of this side of Solly Road that you're on. Because Solly Road is actually the divide between the two districts. So on the other side of Solly would be Eastern. But I can get you information about that, too.
Thank you. Mr. Dull?
Good evening. My name is David Dull. I live at 534 Heavy Tree Hills, Severna Park, Maryland. I'm speaking on behalf of the Anaronda County Libertarian Subcommittee. The central plank for our party is that, is what we call the non-aggression principle. It's the idea that if you're not harming anyone else, you should be able to free, you should be free to do whatever you want. Unfortunately, the last few weeks, a few sex workers have been arrested here in Anaronda County. I've taken the time to write out some of the names from the last few years. We don't believe that, since there was no victim, that there should not be a crime, and these people shouldn't be arrested. I'm very happy that we're seeing tremendous movement forward on women's rights, but we don't, we seem to be lagging behind on this one. I know this isn't a county council issue. I will be trying to attempt to reach out to the state's attorney to see if we can, if they will just not prosecute these people for these victimless crimes. But I am very frustrated that, I know the Democrat Party has been taking steps forward on the state level with various issues, but they seem to be missing on this one. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Ms. Dull. Mr. Curtis?
Yes, my name's Jonathan Curtis. I live at 646 Warblers Perch Lane, also in Tannard Springs, more specifically at the point of Tannard Springs. And our issues we've been having recently have been with parking. When the development was built, we were told we'd be able to park on the street, come to find out, streets are not wide enough for street parking, and it is really limited where we can park. We don't have enough parking for our development. It's been told to us that fire code says the streets aren't wide enough. I'll take that to some level, but when I go into other areas, whether it be Howard County, Montgomery County, I see streets that are just as wide as ours, and they have not one, but two sides of the street parking. If the code states that, fine, but at some point, either the code needs to change so other developments in the future don't have the same issue, because eventually home values are going to be hurt by this, because you're not going to sell your house because you've got no place for people to park. The two and a half parking spaces per home code that apparently Anaronda County has seems to be a little light, because who has half a car? When they put just enough overflow in for two houses to have one spot, there's never enough parking in our development. People are constantly getting tickets from Anaronda County because they're parking in fire lanes when they have no other places to park. And that's where we'd like to see some change there. I have met with Councilman Volkey and his legislative assistant several times on this. They've been working with us, but it's just, we'd like to see something changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Thank you all. Is there anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak? You may come to the table, state your name and address for the record. I see Ms. Johnson coming forward. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? For invitation audience.
Julie Johnson, PO, BAC 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I want to thank you all for your help and your courtesy and your attention and your concern, you know, because you know I've got problems and I really do need help. I sent each of you an email about some other supporting information, because you have been spared 20 years of my crying, because I really have a serious neighbor problem, where they really do threaten my life. They really do cause serious damage. And they also abuse and exploit the legitimate and proper, you know, concept of code enforcement. Because what they do is they file complaints, and then they get, you know, they get people to come after me. Although, God knows, I'm not the only one, because each time I've spoken to the heads of the different agencies, hands down, they admit somewhere between 85 and 95 percent of the complaints they receive are really, not about whatever they're complaining about, it's really a part of a neighbor conflict. And these people have learned through their attorneys and through other people, use the strong arm in the government, because that can slam down your neighbor, and it can make somebody really, really miserable. I sent you a document dated June 30, 1999, and it's 13 pages, and it's pretty short. It's got grammatical errors, it's got typos. I didn't know what I was doing. I was representing myself. So it's not a very good legal document. But, for example, the one neighbor had the septic system put in, and you've heard a little bit about that, that you dig a hole eight feet in diameter and 30 feet deep, and you pull out the dirt. That's a lot of dirt.
Ms. Johnson, could you please summarize?
Oh, my goodness. I will ask you to think about the legislative changes that need to be made. Again, I would ask you for your help, because this is so grim and so scary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I believe we have one more person to testify for invitation audience. Again, this is the last call, but if you can come forward and come to the table.
Your name and address in two minutes.
Absolutely. My name's David Bishop. I live at 811 Maga Vista Road in Arnold. Couple of things, I'll try to make them both brief. First one, I've put out a lot of feelers about traffic management, infrastructure. Obviously, it's always a big issue in front of you as the council. My feeling on it is that we are basically overpopulated on the peninsula. The infrastructure that we want to expand is going to run out of space, particularly on the Broadneck Peninsula, because we don't have any more room for additional roads unless we want to go over the Maggie T. River, expand the Severn River bridges, or knock out businesses on Ritchie Highway. So, just want to put that out there as a major concern for, obviously, people on Broadneck Peninsula, but Pasadena and Annapolis as well. Another issue that I'm very passionate about, as some of you may already know, is gun rights. While that's primarily a state issue, I do want to point out that I think it's important, even at a local level, that we recognize that our Second Amendment right is extremely important to us individually. That is, anyone who has a disadvantage of weakness, or a disadvantage of not being able to defend themselves, it's an equalizer for those people. Particularly women who are sexually assaulted have an opportunity to defend themselves when they're armed. It's happened on countless occasions. There are, obviously, safeguards we need to have in place, particularly for violent convicts. And I do believe that certain common sense gun controls in that area, when it comes to violent convicts, are extremely important, but I want to make sure that I emphasize that it is a self-defense issue. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Seeing no movement in the audience, the invitation audience is now closed. We're going to move along. Is there any item, any council member would like to place or remove from the agenda? Yep, Councilwoman Hare?
I'll just say for the record that Bill 5019 is being withdrawn. It's my understanding that the Agritourism Commission is going to look at a more comprehensive bill that would include wineries, breweries, et cetera, so we'll take that for now. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, for the record, Madam Secretary, 5019 is being withdrawn.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or amendments constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of June 3, 2019.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Andrew Pruski at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May I have a motion to approve the amendments of June 3, 2019?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of June 3, 2019 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 5619, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Project Labor Agreements. Bill Number 5719, An Ordinance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Human Relations Commission, Discrimination in Housing. Bill Number 5819, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Classified Service, Exempt Service. Bill Number 5919, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Notice Requirements.
Madam Secretary, could you please read the titles of resolutions to be introduced this evening?
Resolution Number 2619, Resolution Confirming a Nomination to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anaronda County, Incorporated. Resolution Number 2719, Resolution Recognizing June 19, 2019, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Anaronda County.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Number 2719?
So moved. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on Resolution Number 2719 is adopted.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2719.
Resolution Number 2719, Resolution Recognizing June 19, 2019, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Anaronda County.
Okay, thank you. My understanding is sponsors, Councilwoman Radveen, Councilwoman Lacy. Not sure if you'd like to make some comments regarding the resolution. Councilwoman Radveen?
Yes, I'm introducing this resolution to recognize important history at the national level regarding the emancipation of formerly enslaved people in the United States. While there's some very specific Maryland history that will involve recognizing November 1 as Maryland Emancipation Day, because that actually happened before Juneteenth. Juneteenth recognizes emancipation of formerly enslaved people nationwide. And if it's all right, I would like to read the entire resolution, because it shares some important history on this topic, and it's only a page long. Resolution Recognizing June 19, 2019, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Anaronda County. Whereas, more than two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation was issued by President Abraham Lincoln, news of the end of slavery still had not reached the frontier areas of the United States. And whereas, on June 19, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, with news that the Civil War had ended and that enslaved were free. And whereas, Juneteenth, or June 19, is celebrated each year as the date when the last enslaved people in the United States were freed, and commemorates the spontaneous celebration that erupted among African-Americans upon learning of their freedom more than 150 years ago. And whereas, in 2014, the Maryland General Assembly passed a law requiring the governor to proclaim June 19 as Juneteenth National Freedom Day every year, as a special day of observance and recognition of the emancipation of all slaves in the United States. And whereas, Juneteenth National Freedom Day, which recalls how slaves hated slavery and celebrates its abolishment with excitement and great joy, serves as a reminder to all Americans of the status and importance of Americans of African descent. And whereas, slavery was not officially abolished until the ratification of the 13th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States in December 1865. And whereas, the faith and strength of character demonstrated by former slaves and descendants of former slaves remain an example for all people of the United States, regardless of background, religion, or race, now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Anaronda County, Maryland, that it hereby recognizes June 19, 2019, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Anaronda County, and calls upon the people of Anaronda County to join their fellow citizens in recognizing the special day, the special observance. And be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be sent to County Executive Stuart Pittman. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Radveen, any further discussion on this? Do we have any comments from the administration regarding this resolution?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Volkey?
Thank you. Maybe I'll ask the administration this. I guess my question would be, does this somehow create sort of a holiday for Anaronda County, or what is this going to do in terms of the actual effect of it? I guess that's where I'm a little confused.
I don't believe it creates a holiday. For the record, Pete Barron, County Executive's Office, we fully support this resolution.
Okay, but you don't anticipate that it will create any kind of holiday? This is not going to show up on calendars, or sort of, what's the impact of the bill? I guess is the question. That's what I'm trying to understand.
I think the county, the council, Legislative Council can answer more specifically, but I believe the county executive will recognize this day, will proclaim it, there will be press. I'm sure that we will make sure that social media and other, and we spread the word of this important historical fact. And as Councilwoman Radveen noted, Maryland has a sort of unique history, and there's actually an emancipation day as well. And I think we need to recognize both.
And we're celebrating Juneteenth currently at the state level?
Correct.
And we're celebrating at the national level, too?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And are we, is the county executive intending to celebrate Juneteenth holiday regardless of whether the council passes this resolution or not?
I have not spoken to the county executive with that specific answer, but now that you ask, yes.
All right, fair. And I would ask, Madam Legislative Council, do you have any sense of whether, if this passes, this is going to change anything for Anaronda County calendaring purposes? I guess that's a question I would have.
I was going to say, this holiday is already on my iPad calendar.
Okay.
And it has been declared a holiday by the state, and just because it's called a holiday doesn't mean that it's a holiday for purposes of taking a day off.
Okay. And what other holidays does the county recognize in addition to Juneteenth, if we pass this? What other sort of holidays have we done something similar with, where the national and the state already do this, and now we, as a county, are doing it as well? If anybody can tell me.
You mean a national and a state and a local holiday that isn't a holiday for, you know?
Not necessarily, no, but I guess, do we have similar resolutions to this, where we're recognizing a specific day that's already been recognized at the national and the state level, where the county is then subsequently recognizing it? I'm just curious if there's any precedent for this on anything else that we do.
I don't know.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilwoman Lacy, and I believe we had somebody over here.
Oh, hearing thunder, I move to close debate before lightning strikes this council and call the question.
Okay, is there?
Is there a second?
Yeah. I think, Mr. Volkey, are you finished with your questioning?
I'm done, no questions.
I just wanted to make sure. Councilwoman Radveen, though, I think wanted to respond as well.
My intent of this resolution was not to create the type of holiday where, you know, institutions would close and whatnot, although I appreciate the suggestion. I think that's something we might look at at the national level, but obviously, at the county council, we don't have that authority. So it's really just to recognize the history nationwide, even though our history in Maryland is slightly different. I think, you know, as a state that's a member of the United States, recognizing the national history is important as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lacy, any additional?
Oh, just to also remind my colleagues that resolutions do not have the force of law. Therefore, I wouldn't expect this resolution to create anything that would have the force of law, such as a new holiday. I call the question.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, administration, anything to add? Okay, no further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2719.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 2719 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4719.
Bill Number 4719, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Stormwater Management Credit.
Okay, this is administration, Mr. Barron and the crew, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. With me at the table is Mr. Michelson and Ms. Henry from DPW, and Ms. Kenny from Office of Law. I believe, I saw Mr. Africa earlier, and I believe he's in the audience if we have any questions. Bill 4719 transfers the responsibility to process stormwater credits and appeals from the Department of Inspections and Permits to the Department of Public Works. These staff are ideally situated to help publicize stormwater management property tax credit, as well as administer its proceedings. Given the similarity with the WPRF credits, the Department of Public Works Watershed Protection and Restoration Program, that was mouthful. The transfer of these responsibilities from IMP should also provide an opportunity for the IMP staff to focus on inspections and permits rather than administering tax credits. There's no additional cost to the county. This doesn't create new tax credits. This changes the administration of it. Folks at the table are happy to answer any questions. With that, we ask you to move favorable on the bill.
Any initial discussions from council members? Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to know, is Department of Public Works okay with the additional responsibilities? Okay. Is this, I assume this makes it more efficient somehow?
Sure. Eric Michelson, Public Works. So we already have staff who are administering the WPRF credit and appeals, so yes, it increases the efficiency. They're basically ideally situated to be able to handle these, as opposed to having IMP have this outside of their normal scope of work.
Okay, well, I'm just curious if we'll be tracking it all over the course of the year, sort of, the efficiencies and whether it is getting done faster or more efficiently with Public Works than inspections and permits was? Is that something we can do?
I don't know. What we could probably be able to do is look at the number of credit applications that have been made previously versus what will be done once it's under us. Again, we'll be in a better position, I think, to publicize it, also to make people aware of the fact that this exists. So we can talk about that, for sure.
Awesome. Efficient is good. I like it. Thanks.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just make a comment. I'm hopeful that since the budget included the Anaronda staff positions, and that's a big impetus for the administration, that the statistical data that Councilwoman Hare is asking about would be able to be included and reported back to us, so we can ensure this is doing what we think it's going to do.
That's a fair point. Thank you, sir. Okay, any further discussion? Let's hear from the public. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 4719. Remarks are limited to two minutes. Is there anyone that'd like to speak on 4719? Seeing no movement in the crowd, the public hearing on Bill Number 4719 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4719.
Bill Number 4719, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Stormwater Management Credit.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 4719.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 4719 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4819.
Bill Number 4819, An Ordinance Concerning Planning and Development, Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems.
Okay, administration, Mr. Barron and the crew?
Good evening again, oh, sorry. Good evening again. Pete Barron, County Executive's Office. Joining me at the table is Cindy Carrier and Phil Hager from OPZ, and Kelly Kenny from Office of Law. Interim amendments to the Water and Sewer Master Plan may be made, may be considered on a semi-annual basis. This would amend sewer service category to allow a property owner to connect to public sewer per the owner's request at the owner's expense. It makes a few other changes, including recognizing the well at Fusco Park. All the amendments were reviewed by OPZ, DPW, IMP, and the Health Department. Happy to answer any questions. We ask you move favorable on the bill.
Okay, any initial questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 4819. Remarks are limited to two minutes. Remarks are limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up, but if you'd like to come forward, please do so now. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 4819 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4819.
Bill Number 4819, an ordinance concerning planning and development, master plan for water supply and sewerage systems.
Reserving further discussion from the Council or Administration. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 4819.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill Number 4819 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4919.
Bill Number 4919, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, community meetings, notice.
Mr. Barron and smaller crew?
Good evening again. For the record, Pete Barron with the County Exec's Office. With me from planning and zoning is Phil Hager, and from law is Kelly Kenny. In the community meeting section of the code, a developer is required to mail notice of community meetings to property owners, community associations, OPZ, and the council member where the, where the development is going to be. And there's a provision if it abuts a council district. There's currently no requirement to notify the County Exec Office. All this is doing is just streamlining to make sure that the Office of Community Services, Community Services, Constituent Services and Community Engagement, knew I would get it, be provided with notice at the same speed as everybody else. We believe this will help speed up the process. It also requires when there's a major change to a development that the developer have another public hearing. And Mr. Hager, I'm sure, can speak more specifically what a major change entails. Essentially, it's when you get a hyphenated numerical suffix following the original property number. So it is a significant change to the plan. The community had a meeting, assumed the project looked one way. There's been a change, for whatever reason, and it could be completely legitimate and necessary, but we believe that the community should have another opportunity to hear from the folks involved in the project. So with that, we ask you move favorable on the bill.
Okay, Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hager, currently, does Office of Planning and Zoning maintain a list online of all the community meetings that are happening across the entire county?
We do not.
Okay, because I have something on my website where we link to it, and you can look up community meetings that are posted. So I know there's something out there.
Well, our office does maintain, but the purpose of that is not to maintain a database. That's not, the onus or responsibility for these meetings resides with the actual applicant.
Understood. I guess that, what it sounds like currently we get as council people is noticing. You're an individual district, this is what's going on.
Okay.
But the county executive isn't getting that same notice and never has under the way the code is written. That's what it sounds like to me.
That is correct.
Okay. And so my question would be, it sounds like the county executive's office could already get that notice by going onto your website and looking at the OPZ project list to see where the community meetings are. And considering that it's not a district-by-district, but that the county executive has the whole county, you literally just look at that list and you could see everything that was going on.
There's a lot of ways that people could get that, and the information that's placed on our website may not always be placed there as soon as they would receive notice if they were provided notice otherwise. Since I've been in this position, this discussion has taken place consistently with the Office of Constituent Services within the prior administration as well as this one, because they were not consistently being notified in the event that there was, of a pending community meeting. So it became difficult for them to respond with accurate information, and as is appropriate, when they did not know about the project either, yet they would, a resident was, would get a notice in the mail about one of these, and their first call might be to the Office of Constituent Services.
Sure.
And they say, well, what's going on? And they would not have the ability to know how to respond. They really wouldn't even know what office unless the constituent read back to them the contents of the letter whom, that they should contact. And so this was a problem with the prior administration, it's a problem with this administration. And given the fact that there are other people besides the Office of Constituent Services that might be needing to have this information, but that, who were part of the county executive's office, it made sense that we changed this list to add the county executive's office and/or their designate. So the county executive will have the opportunity to have that information for his own purposes and to distribute to any other folks that they think should have this information. So it's going to increase, there's a minor increase in transparency, but there's a significant opportunity for improvement in efficiencies within the executive's office so that everyone has the same information at the same time and would know whom to contact with questions.
So I guess my question to follow up on that would be, how quickly from the time that this notice is provided, I mean, a community meeting, the developer or the applicant or whoever it is, they have to send a copy of this to the council person for their district, but they also have to send it to your office, right?
Mm-hmm.
So how quickly does your office get this information online?
Well, it depends upon the workload of the staff involved with, with being able to do that.
I guess I'm just trying to struggle with the idea that paper mailing things is going to be more efficient than online stuff, but that's just where I'm, where I'm trying to get it.
The beauty of the paper trail, okay.
Sure.
You know, being what it is as an attorney, I'm sure you're comfortable and fully cognizant of those issues. However, there's always opportunities, and we're always looking for ways to improve. Much of this information that does specify mailing also takes place in a duplicative format through electronic media as well.
Okay.
And, you know, we work very closely with MBIA and with the development community with regards to issues like this.
Have you worked with them on this issue?
Yes.
Okay, because I talked to them earlier and they had not, they were not aware of this bill. So at least that's what the person that I talked to from MBIA said.
Okay, all right.
But I don't mean to contradict you, I'm just, that was what, that's where my concern comes out of it, is that I wasn't sure that they were clear on this one.
Yes. Yeah, it's been discussed with them at their regular scheduled MBIA meeting that they have with our office.
Okay. And I guess the other question I would follow up with is, there's this sense of if it's a major change, then at that point, there's a need for another community meeting. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but my understanding from the discussion or from some information that we've been provided from our county attorney is that this isn't necessarily for major changes. These dash one applications are when, you know, you've got somebody who comes in and they apply, and then there's some sort of change needed, and so instead of making them reapply and start over, they get a dash one application. So it seemed to me like that was a less major and kind of more of a minor change. Am I missing that?
That's not the primary thrust of this legislation. The primary thrust of this legislation is what we, the matter that we just discussed.
The county executive piece?
Yes.
Okay.
But traditionally, we have required that there be, ever since we began the emphasis on transparency and on requiring these community meetings, which dates back to the last administration, there's been the, there's been by custom and tradition, when there is a dash one project, then we require a community meeting at that time.
So are you already doing this?
We are already doing it by custom and tradition, but this, this will make it a requirement that we do this. These don't come up, come up all that often. It's a relatively infrequent process, but it just clarifies and makes, it makes it certain that when these do come up. And, you know, not everybody is keen, is keen on the requirement of having an additional community meeting. There's time and expense associated with it. This would give us, our office, something to say, well, it is a requirement and we are, we want, we want you to, you know, it gives us an additional opportunity to ensure that the meeting does take place.
Okay. How many of these dash one applications have you had in the last 12 months, I guess on a rolling average?
Maybe two.
Okay.
Three, the most.
So we're not talking about a lot of projects?
No, no.
And are you currently doing this for all dash one projects or just for dash ones that impact environmentally sensitive areas?
Well, we are, we are treating.
By custom, I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, anytime that there would be a, anytime that there would be a modification that would come in, it would, that would be associated with that.
Okay. So for anything, not just the environmental ones, for everything?
Right.
Okay. And are you having problems currently with the developers not wanting to comply or refusing to do another community meeting when you tell them they have to?
No, they, no, but in a case like this, if there's any, it's not a, it is not something that is, it's a gray area.
Okay.
It's not something that we clearly have the ability to compel. And in a case like this where we feel that public notification is required, because some of these things, if it involved a controversial project, for example, and someone said, well, gee, I thought that project was dead, how did that get resurrected? Okay, well, if there's a way for the project to be resurrected, in this particular case, the methodology might be through a dash one or a dash two or something like that. And then how would, how would the community be aware of it if we didn't require a community meeting? So that's what the nexus of that is.
And do these generally come up? So if you look at the bill under subsection A, section one, and then Roman numeral I, Roman numeral two, I should say, and then one, two, and three, so four obviously states that one of these, any of these dash one applications would require another community meeting. Is it, I mean, are you getting primarily these dash one applications under Roman numeral one, under Roman numeral two, or under Roman numeral three? Are any of them more prevalent than others? I mean, are you generally doing these on environmentally sensitive ones, or are they, are they on all of them or one?
Well, actually, it's not really applicable to that, that, if I understand your question, what you're saying is that, does it fall into one of those categories? And what this does is creates an additional category where a community meeting would be required, not that it had to fall into one of those other areas. So in this case, we would require that a community meeting be held if it has an impact on environmentally sensitive area. If it's a subdivision of property that it joins a residentially zoned property, if the development is of commercial, industrial, institutional use or active, et cetera. Number four would be it, would be a project that is being assigned.
And revisions to those, which covers your dash one project.
Yeah, so it would be for any, for any reason.
I might have asked the question poorly. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, are you seeing these dash one projects come up more frequently under one of these three subsections?
No.
So they're all sort of equal?
The reasons why there would be a dash one project are going to be particularly unique to a given project. It may have something to do with the project financing. It might have something to do with the technical requirements of a project. It could be expiration of time. It could be a lot of, a lot of factors. None of, usually they don't have any reason to do anything with a code requirement. It's usually on the side of the applicant.
It's on the what?
It's usually on the side of the applicant.
So what does that mean?
It's, they missed a deadline. They, they've made a substantial change in the, the project going forward with regards to a, a project design. They decided that there was a, an expiration that, of the present thing. They may have done a completely new financing network, maybe new people were investing in a project. There's just a whole slew of reasons why something like this might come about.
So when you said that it's not necessarily a code issue, it's sort of a backend issue. So it sounds like these modifications are changes or modifications to their application that have less to do with the scope of the project and more to do with sort of the details of the project, be they financing, timing, et cetera?
It could.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to understand, I think this is a nice idea in theory. I'm not opposed to the idea in theory. I'm trying to understand, is there a purpose? And is this really something that's needed? And how frequently is this coming up? And how is it being used? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
It's not a very frequent occurrence.
Okay.
But when it occurs.
Is it generally dealing with a scope of the project issue where they're asking for major changes under the code? Or is this more like their financing got changed? Or they missed a deadline by a couple days or something? Which is it?
There can be many different reasons why, why something like this would occur.
If they were to make a major change under the code, would they be allowed to do a dash one reaplication, if you will?
If, if the.
Or would you generally make them reap?
If the circumstances associated with that would be the case. This is not something that's coming about when someone is deciding that they're going to build three fewer or three more units in a given development, or change from a 22-foot townhouse to a 24-foot townhouse. Those aren't the kind of things that we're talking about.
Those wouldn't be dash ones. Those would be a reaplication.
Well, they wouldn't even be a reaplication. They would just be a project reconfiguration, a redesign, a tweak of the, a project. These kinds of things occur all the time as projects move through the development review process.
So would those reconfigurations require another community meeting?
No.
That seems like that's a problem.
Well, if you're building two fewer townhouses than you were before, that's.
Well, I agree, that, that piece of it, if you're going down, is a good thing. But if you're going up?
Well, and that would be captured in the final meeting that would, that is required in our process, because there's community meetings staggered throughout the process.
Okay. But we're not, but if they were to come in and reconfigure the project and ask to add more density, you're saying that they wouldn't have to do another community meeting? You'd wait till you get to the final?
No, and if somebody's coming in with a substantial modification to, when I say modification, it's a small M, okay?
All right.
If they're redesigning the project, then there's going to be a whole lot of other things that are going to come into play that may or may not trigger a dash one assignment, okay?
Okay.
But all of those are going to require that the public be engaged. There's engagement required now throughout the entire process.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hager.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We spoke a little bit last week about grandfathering clauses, and my question is, are there any pending projects where there might be a dash one in process or in place or whatnot that you think there would be some kind of inequity if we did not have grandfathering language in this bill?
No, it, we would, we would have already been requiring them to do a community meeting anyway.
Okay.
And if there would be any that was pending, they would have already been informed that they were, a community meeting was expected.
So if I understand you correctly, this bill just codifies existing practice and custom and then requires that the county executive get notice?
And it establishes how things are going to be done from here on out as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's open it up to the public and hear from them. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up. Is there anyone like to come forward on 4919? Ms. Johnson is on her way. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward? Please do so at this time.
My concern, as you know, is due to, is notice to the citizens. And so anything that improves notice to the citizen and an opportunity to defend and state your position and have a fair hearing, those are all important things. But I attended a hearing, and the developer said, nobody ever comes to the, you know, the public, you know, the community meetings. So it really doesn't matter. Now, you put up the signs, whether they see them or not, you know, no big deal. And at one, at a different one, the hearing officer said, oh, you posted this, you posted three signs, one at the end of the dead end trail, one down in the woods where probably a couple of deer and some squirrels saw them, and then once on a small route. And he says, yes, because the law only requires 175 feet, which has now been expanded to 300 feet. I'm trying to make the point that, you know, the boundaries are not adequate to really notify the public. And I'll just give you the example of many years ago, when they were going to, Bessgate Road used to be a strip of asphalt, one direction east to one direction west. You could go from the 711 on Taylor and Ridgely, turn right on Ridgely, go to Bessgate, straight out to General's Highway, turn right, and the first light was where the hospital is. It's a lot different now. You've noticed. I mean, the number of traffic lights, the time it takes to travel, of course, now we have a lot more lanes, but it's, you know, you get the picture. And so this was done, you know, the public notice was really, really restricted. One developer supposedly had no idea what the property next door was, you know, going to become. Of course, they knew.
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson. Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
So my concern is, anything that helps get the information to the public is really important. And I was going to suggest the concept of require the builders and developers to make little YouTube videos that get it going. So, you know, hire a high school kid to go and video the thing. Something.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Okay. Thank you.
The public hearing on Bill number 4919 is now closed. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 4919.
Bill number 4919, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, community meetings, notice.
Okay. See no other lights. Administration, anything additional?
We like this bill. Please vote it.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 4919.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seventy affirmative, none of the negative. Bill number 4919 is passed.
Okay. And just for the record, we withdrew 5019 earlier. And Madam Secretary, we are now moving on. Could you please read the title of Bill number 5219?
Bill number 5219, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplementary appropriation, and transfer of funds.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary. While Mr. Barron and the crew are getting together, this is an emergency ordinance, so any amendment that passes, this bill could still pass per our rule. So I just want to make that clear for the record. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Good evening again. Pete Barron with the County Executive's Office. Joining with me at the table is Mr. Shagnovich from the schools and Mr. Stansky from the school system, and Lori Blair-Klausmeyer from Office of Law. This is our annual fourth quarter transfer bill. I will let the school system describe the details of it. This is an important bill. We ask that you move it and pass it. For the record, the fiscal year ends July 1st. You have voted on last year's budget, or this year's budget for next year. So this bill ends two weeks from now.
Good evening. Alachek Novich, Chief Operating Officer, joined by Matt Stansky, our Director of Financial Operations. Bringing the fourth quarter operating budget supplemental and transfer request before you essentially allows us to recognize revenues that we have received over the course of the year that were not previously anticipated at the beginning of the budget year, and also allows us to make any intercategorical adjustments necessary to close out our budget. It is, as Mr. Barron said, an item that we bring before the council each and every year at this period of time. Essentially, it allows us, again, to recognize the revenues. The bill indicates that there's about $7 million of revenues that we've received on the local side that is principally attributable to two things. E-rate, which we get from the Schools and Library Commission, and interest income, and then about $5.5 million of various federal and state grants, because revenues have to match expenses to have a balanced budget. It recognizes those new revenues and then maps those over to the specific expense items that they were designated for. Unique to the school system budget, different than your county budget, we're obligated to not just balance at the bottom line, just as you are, but here within the state of Maryland, in the education article, they have a construct where they've got 15 state budget categories. We use 13 of them at the present, so we not just have to balance at the bottom line, but within each and every one of those 13 unique categories. So this allows us to do that as well. And with that, we'll be prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council members. Councilwoman here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my first question is, $25 million is a lot of money to move around. Certainly, I expect you can't spend $25 million in the next two weeks. So has this money already been spent?
Sure. So 25 is actually a very big misnomer. So there's about $12.5 million worth of new money. As you can see, the way the bill is drafted, items one and two, which is your legislative item 17 and 18, is new money that came into the school district. Okay? Your legislative item 24 through 28 are actually reductions. So those reductions, and then the 36 to 43, your legislative text are the increases. So you've got new money, the first two items I mentioned, and then you've got reductions, and then you've got the application of those $2. So there's not $25 million of new money. The new money is really that $12.5 million that's on your legislative item, lines 17 and 18.
Certainly. But we're still spending. I mean, we're taking $12 million from one area, plus we're getting 12 and a half of new money, and then we're outlaying 25 in new categories, right?
The net effect is, there's a $25 million adjustment. 12.5 of it is the new dollars. The balance of it are the shifts amongst categories.
So is that money already spent?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
So irrespective of what we do tonight, this money is already gone?
Right. So the two pieces of it, on new revenue, obviously, when you're offered grants or whatever, your option is either you accept it and comply with the grant requirements, or you say, no, thank you, you know, keep the money. But in the other categories, yeah, you know, the money has already been expended or expensed. So it would be very difficult. If somebody provided transportation for a non-public student using the money in March, April, et cetera, it would be very difficult to claw that back from that individual.
Certainly. So I guess that goes to my question a little bit. I'm not suggesting that any of this was not well-intentioned or whatnot, but was it possible that any of this might have been known prior so that you would actually come to us in advance of expending the money instead of after the fact?
So we actually come down for a second quarter transfer. So you'll see us here in December. So we do a mid-year adjustment that we appear before the body, and then we continue on through the year, and then reconcile everything at the end of the year in June.
Okay. And do I understand this to say that we actually underran salaries and wages by almost $5.5 million?
In the prior... Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you. As I understand it, because this is emergency legislation, it's going to take five votes of the council to pass this. So I guess my question would be, if we don't pass this, what happens?
Well, two things. There's this vagrity of state law that says that if we notify you of this, you have 30 days to act. If you don't act, it essentially goes into a force by default. We've actually exceeded that 30-day cycle. But more importantly, it would place us in a budget year that we would not be in balance categorically. So we would essentially violate the state category regulation. What the state decides to do as a result of that is entirely up to the state agency.
And the reason for that would be because this money has already been expended, but you don't have an appropriation to justify the expense yet.
Correct. So again, so there's an appropriation issue, and that's at the macro level, at the bottom line level. And then it has to be apportioned in expense within those state categories.
Understood. But the money has already been spent, as Councilwoman here was asking.
Yes, sir.
Money's already expended. So regardless of what we do, money's spent, can't get it back, but you all need us to bless the expenditure effectively, is what you're asking for. That's how I understand it.
To allow us to close out the year in accordance with the state's accounting requirements.
To ensure that it's a balanced budget.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what it is? I understand the additional revenue. I understand the reallocation of revenue, $25 million. Can you tell me what in these categories, one, administration, two, textbooks, everything that starts on line 36 of page two of the bill? What's going on there?
Sure.
What have you all spent money on in each of those categories?
So in administration, it really has to do with our charter and contract schools. They give us a draft budget at the beginning of the year, and then they work on that budget. So it's $282,000. Again, almost all of it has to do with our charter and contract school administrative budgets, where the administrative budgets of those four schools exceeded what their initial budgeted elements were. Textbook and supplies, that's mostly grant revenue that we've received to support our purchase of instructional materials, athletic equipment, musical instruments, and technology enhancements. Other instructional costs, again, has to do essentially with IT infrastructure in schools expenditures. Special education is largely grant-funded, both state and federal funding. The largest element of that has to do with increased costs in the non-public tuition arena, and that really is two pieces. There's a utilization element, the number of youngsters that are accessing non-public placements, as well as the tuition costs for those students, and then the cost to transport those students. In the transportation category, it's additional routes that we have at the district level, largely predicated upon enrollment growth, general plus enrollment growth for those non-publics. We actually transport students from Anaromal County out into Baltimore County, into Frederick County, et cetera, some pretty long runs, and you may only have one or two youngsters on those, you know, transport routes. So it's a very inefficient transportation, very costly sort of endeavor. We also had a cost shift. We have a High Roads Academy, which is a non-public school that used to provide transportation to students using, they self-perform transportation using vans. I call them karate vans. I know that's not the official legal name for it, but the state of Maryland has...
There's a condo line, 15 passengers. Is that what you're talking about?
The state of Maryland had deemed that that was not a suitable, so that transportation mechanism didn't comport with the transportation elements of the state education article. That school did not have conventional buses that passed both the state and the federal requirements. So we had to pick up the cost of that. That was slightly in excess of $500,000 for the High Roads Academy. And then we had an increase in our McKinney-Vento homeless youngster transportation. Operation of Plant, that's actually the fiber ring network category. So we got about $4.9 something million worth of revenue from the School and Library Commission. And again, that is used as funding to pay you back, because you, the county, are providing me with that high-speed, high-security underground connectivity to fiber ring that the county built out. That's Operation of Plant?
So that's separate from the IT costs that you noted under other instructional costs?
Right. Yeah. So that is more of a hardware hubs, routers, which is that type of vein. Maintenance of plant is projects associated with unanticipated facility needs. We had two oil tanks go bad for us underground this year. We've had a number of chillers go bad on us.
And we budget for that in the big budget, too, though, right?
Well, you budget for that on a cyclical replacement. So I know that a boiler or a chiller has about a 25-year life cycle. Again, you're anticipating you're going to get to the 25th year. If you treat the thing well, maybe you can get 26, 27 years. If you treat it poorly, you're going to get maybe, you know, 23, 24 years out of it. But then things, tongue-in-cheek, go boom in the middle of the night. I don't anticipate an underground storage tank failure. We had two of them this past year. They easily, the clocks start ticking at half a million to a million dollars on an underground failed oil tank, and then goes up from there. And the same thing for chillers that go out. You know, we try to, we have service contracts. We do preventive maintenance on them, and we try to repair them if it's something like a condenser or a compressor even, so certain components of the chiller can be replaced. And we would absolutely replace the $30,000 compressor on a chiller before. But if the tubes, if the metallurgy, the tubes in the chiller itself or the boiler go out, that's no longer, that unit is now done. And your only option is to replace it. Because we're in session and we can't go without conditioning, we frequently have to go out on the market, and we have to rent capacity. So we'll bring in a rental chiller, a rental portable boiler to keep the school up and running while that item is off-cycle. So it was not a planned CIP expenditure. We have to undertake that replacement and yet keep the school operational the whole entire time. Capital outlay is IT infrastructure, so that's wiring. Essentially, it's not a hardware component. It's a wiring element within our building. I think that rounds out the categories that you were referencing earlier.
Is this typical for the fourth quarter transfer to be $25 million?
Well, again, so there's the revenue element of it.
From two sources. I got it.
Disaggregated. So the revenue goes up and down, and the backup that we gave, Madam Auditor, shows you where the revenue comes from. Again, it's federal, state, or miscellaneous private grants, et cetera. That is of a pretty unpredictable nature. We begin, hold back up a second. So we actually begin our, we finish our element of the budget development cycle in about October, November. So we're sitting here in June of 2019, this budget from our perspective, which largely developed and put in a can back in October or November of 2017. So, you know, a many number of months have transpired between the superintendent delivering his budget in December of 2017 and today. The federal government, for example, doesn't even adopt their budget to October. So our fiscal year starts in...
Do they even do budgets?
Well, we're CRs or whatever they're doing. So, I mean, our budget starts in, you know, in July, the hard start date, and we don't even know where the federal government is until October, if we're lucky. And the state similarly has its initial budget, but then they release funding through the year and true it up. So on the revenue side, that is kind of all over the board, and it's clearly outside of our hands. We're very aggressive on the grant development side. So to the extent that we're fortunate enough to bring in grants, that just accrues to the benefit of the county.
Sure.
But the state and federal elements are really numerically driven or state and federal appropriation driven. So those are kind of out of our hands in that regard.
And just, I guess, on the money that's coming in that you're reallocating, the 5.4 million for instructional salaries and wages, that's because you didn't pay teachers or other positions that you had the money allocated for, but you didn't actually pay it out?
Sure. So that actually comes in a number of different formats. So there could be vacancies. Vacancies can occur for a myriad of issues. So every two weeks that a paycheck isn't cut physically...
Gotcha.
That's money that's not spent. You can bring in folks at a lower rate of pay than, so we have a budgeted turnover of replacement costs.
You're a replacement person.
Yep. So to the extent that you have a lower replacement cost...
Sure.
To the extent we had folks anticipating that there may be enhanced compensation, we have to pay out things like leave and benefits to folks. So if you have a lower departure rate than you anticipated, maybe folks are anticipating a better compensation increase and making decisions to stay. And that category doesn't only have hard salaries, it also has the stipends for professional development, other training activities, curriculum development activities, things like that. So, you know, we budget, we anticipate that 300 people are going to show up to Arundel High School to, you know, attend a training class, and 225 actually do show up, 75 didn't show up.
So there's just savings.
So the savings come back. So there's many things that come back to this category and hit the bottom line.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think actually Councilman Volkey asked most of my questions.
Okay. Councilwoman Pickard?
You're making me very nostalgic for my BOE days. I assume you've already had this conversation with your Board of Education, and there was a unanimous vote accepting your transfer, fourth quarter transfer?
Yes, ma'am. So, I mean, the process is, the superintendent presents it, the board's auditor goes through it, the board's budget committee goes through it, and then there's a vote by the body at a whole, and it was a unanimous approval in terms of this item.
Well, well done. I'll look forward to the one in December.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
I guess, I'm sorry. I thought of one last thing I wanted to ask. Would it be possible for us to get more detail, you know, more breakdown in the future on what's included in these various amounts?
Sure. We actually provided that to Ms. Smith, but it's, they're public documents.
Okay.
So they're public documents. You can absolutely feel free to, please.
Okay. Yeah, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no questions, I'm going to open this up for the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward? Ms. Johnson's on her way. If there's anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak on 5219, please do so at this time. Thank you.
Name's David Bishop, 811, Magavista Road. Wanted just to like to possibly ask the administration and the board in the future. It sounds like they're past that 30-day mark already. It'd be nice to see that submitted prior to that 30-day mark. I'm sure we've had county council meetings between then and the expiration. So I understand there's a lot of bureaucratic requirement that goes before that, but obviously we've already passed that 30-day date. So it'd be good to see that in the future. That aside, I just want to point out, as the fuel oil, guessing the fuel oil expert in the room, your tanks are typically a 30-year lifespan if they're taken care of. So as they said, you could have a failure anytime prior to that if you're not doing proper inspections, if they're not being cleaned properly, things like that on a regular basis. That could be annual, that could be biannual, depending on the use, could be semiannual. Those are all important factors of expanding the lifespan of our facility equipment. I know that there are programs in place now, but most governments, in our experience, don't follow up on them every single year as they're supposed to. So probably something to look at when it comes to budgets in the future to make sure that the fuel oil program and maintenance programs are covered, and be aware, we're dealing with a spill in Anaromal County right now, that we're cleaning up for the Naval Academy because they weren't aware of tanks in the ground that ended up leaking. So just awareness for the future and for your fuel oil uses, both the county and the school system. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland.
I would like to compliment people. You are new. You have not seen the form, you may not have seen the, you know, this emergency ordinance. Sometimes they haven't really filled the one page. This has a lot more detail than in the past and your questions were well-prepared and were important, and I'm really, really pleased that you're digging into this because one of the complaints was, what are you doing here? What is this all about? $25 million? You know, it's an emergency. You didn't just notice you had this problem. You know, why are you springing it on us and it's mandatory, you got to pass it anyway? I mean, so you all, I really am, I'm expressing my appreciation, and I think probably the appreciation of other people, that you all are working so hard at really improving, you know, your service to the community. Of course, well, the Delameters were a brother and sister team who came and they always protested the emergency ordinances because if you know it's coming, how can you justify saying it's an emergency? So I will throw that out to you to, you know, for your consideration and evaluation, but you've already hit on it. This is no surprise to you. You're wonderfully analytic and you, all of you are just wonderfully conscientious and it shows and people appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I see no other movement in the audience, so the public hearing on Bill Number 5219 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill, title of Bill Number 5219.
Bill Number 5219, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplementary appropriation and transfer of funds.
Further discussion, Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to make a couple of comments. I actually echo a lot of what Ms. Johnson just said. I don't understand how this is an emergency. I'm reading Section 4 of this bill, which says that this, an emergency ordinance necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, welfare, and property of this county. I just don't quite understand that. And again, I think that it's an excellent question. How is this not known? How is there a 30-day deadline that we're now passed? And furthermore, how can we call ourselves the final fiscal authority in this county if we are literally being presented with things that we must pass? Because if we don't, then there's going to be all these other triggers that come in. So ultimately, I see what's going to happen with this and I get it. And I'm just putting on the record that I think this kind of stuff definitely takes away from people's confidence in government.
Councilwoman here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to support this, but I would like to ask if next year perhaps we could get a third quarter transfer that might address some of this stuff in advance so we have less sort of, we're not on the back end trying to clean up $25 million, but maybe, you know, if we have a second quarter transfer, maybe we can have a third quarter transfer with some of the stuff that we know in advance. That might help, I think, anyone's feelings of potential, you know, emergencies and we would actually then get to review this before the money is spent. I think that might go a long way towards helping alleviate some of my concerns anyways, maybe others' concerns.
Mr. Barron, the administration? We hope you'll move the bill. Okay. Councilwoman Rodvian?
I agree with my colleagues. I will support this, you know, bill, but, you know, if we could address things as more, closer to the time they actually arise instead of having everything come so late with, you know, with less than detailed information, that would be very helpful in the future.
Any other additional discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5219.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill Number 5219 is passed.
Madam Secretary, I've been informed of the possible motion for recess because due to amendments with the next bill. So I'm going to open it up for the floor. I can't make that motion, so...
I'll move to recess until 8:45. Is that sufficient time?
Make a second first.
10 minutes.
10 minutes, okay. 8:25.
Okay, so let's go back. You're making a motion to do what now?
I'm looking, it's 8:17. So I will make a motion to recess until 8:30.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Madam Secretary, I don't think I have a clear majority. Can you call a roll on that? Again, the motion on the floor, which was probably moved in second, is to have a, well, until 8:30, whatever minute it is, 12-minute recess to work on amendments for the next bill. Madam Secretary?
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to recess for 12 minutes is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This council will recess and we'll be back in session at 8:30. Thank you. The council's now back in session after that brief recess. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5319.
Bill Number 5319, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, fourth-quarter fund transfer, and supplementary appropriations.
Okay. Mr. Barron, would you like to make initial remarks along with the group that's here?
Sure. Good evening again. Pete Barron, County Executive's Office. With me at the table from Budget is Stephen Teroux and from Law is Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. So in order, just like the bill we just heard and the county exec, the CAO contingency fund did do a transfer bill last quarter, but just like the bill we heard, we do have a fourth quarter transfer bill in front of you. In order to comply with the county charter requirement, the administration puts forward a fourth quarter transfer bill every year to ensure departments do not exceed their appropriation authority. Section 1 of the bill transfers 3.5 million appropriation in the general fund from the CAO contingency account to the Office of Central Services, Office of Finance, Fire Department, Office of Personnel, Police Department, the Department of Public Works, Department of Recreation and Parks, the Office of Sheriff, and the Office of Transportation. Section 2 of the bill recognizes unappropriated fund balance or revenues in other funds, in tax increment funds. These revenues are recognized in order to send revenue to the general fund and the City of Annapolis. Lastly, a grant is recognized in the Office of Emergency Management. Just to be clear with something, and folks at Budget and Law will be happy to dive in more detail, tomorrow is the procurement deadline. A memo was sent from the CAO on March 8 to set that deadline. We have policies and procedures in place to prevent departments from excess spending at this point in the fiscal year, which the fiscal year now ends in two weeks. As we have two weeks left, there's no harm in over-appropriating to a department. If money is left over in a department, it will refer to fund balance. Although we will have a couple of amendments to discuss, the auditor's blue letter shows departments possibly needing less appropriation and we'll discuss departments separately as some of these amendments come up. But Budget and the administration feel that we want to be conservative to make sure that departments have the revenue they need to comply with the charter. So we will offer amendments at the appropriate time. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Teroux just to make a couple of quick comments.
Stephen Teroux from the Office of Budget. I just wanted to clear the air a little bit about the emergency ordinance, both on this bill and the last bill. So both of these are emergency ordinances as the fiscal year ends in about two weeks' time. So, for example, if we had amendments to this bill and it was not an emergency ordinance, we would not be able to vote on those amendments tonight and pass the bill. Therefore, we would be missing the end of the fiscal year and transferring these funds because that bill would not become effective until the middle of July if it was not an emergency ordinance. The same thing goes with the Board of Education bill. So that's why they're emergency ordinances, so we can get them enacted in law before the end of the fiscal year to make sure departments don't overspend their budget.
Okay. Initial discussion, Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Teroux, question for you. Is it typical for the administration to bring down these bills with less than 30 days before the end of the fiscal year?
So we're, again, Stephen Teroux from the Office of Budget. We're right around the same timeframe that we have been historically, give or take maybe one council session, probably about two weeks. So the reason these bills wait till the end of the year is this is our last chance to get it right before the end of the fiscal year. So there's a couple of reasons why you want to wait as late as possible to get these introduced. One, you've seen, this bill was probably put together about six weeks ago with the information we had at the time. Budgets changed drastically in those periods of time. That's why the auditor has gone after a lot of these departments in the blue letter because there's more recent information than we had six weeks ago when we drafted this bill. Waiting until now also allows us not to over, the harm in over-appropriating a department, for example, maybe they don't need all those funds, is we do have procurement laws in place, or procedures in place that doesn't, don't allow departments to overspend those on the kind of excess or frivolous spending because the cutoff date is tomorrow. If we did this much earlier in the year, for example, not the departments would say do that, but we wouldn't have those same procedures in place enacted in the same timeframe.
Okay. I guess my question was sort of more historical. Is it typical that these fourth quarter transfers are coming down as emergency legislation?
Yes, just so, again, so we can make sure that they're enacted in the correct amount of time before the end of the fiscal year. For example, you could have amendments in multiple council sessions amending the same bill, that then we put that bill maybe two months down the road before it's actually enacted into law.
Okay. And if any of the extra money that's not spent, as you noted, there's no real harm in it because it falls to fund balance, I guess my question would be, are the taxpayers going to get a refund for any of that?
No. So typically in the budget, we do assume that there's going to be some department savings because, as we said, charter requirement allows them to stay within that appropriation authority. So typically in a given year, in a $1.6 billion budget, we have about $5 million of department savings wide, which is roughly what we're projecting in FY19 as well. So that will revert back to fund balance for use for one-time funds. For example, in the capital budget, you'll see an influx of pay-go funding. That's a use of one-time funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, well, let's open this up for the public hearing. I do not have anyone signed up. Up, Mr. Enright. If there's anyone else who'd like to come forward to testify on Bill 5319, please do
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, ladies of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright at 2052 Huntwood Drive in Gambrels. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but since this issue, it was brought up around 2012, 2011 or so by the Delometer people about the definition of emergency legislation and that these items didn't fit in there. Somewhere in there, I proposed a charter amendment that added a new type of a bill that would accommodate this particular situation that occurs in the fourth quarter every single budget year and to create a new one called an expedited bill. And to save true emergency legislation, as Councilman Volkey mentioned, for true emergencies. And for these types of transfers where you're going to cause all kinds of conundrums by not passing them, by not presenting them in the fourth quarter for unanticipated revenues and so forth, to have this new type of bill to accommodate just those situations. And so you may want to think about something like that as a, not a Band-Aid, but as a solution for this. Can we hit this all the time and here, it's a here we go again type of thing, which I sat through for many, many sessions of protests on the non-emergency, emergency bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enright. Ms. Johnson?
Patrick, can you go ahead? Sure. Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I certainly support Patrick Enright's comments to you about the concept of this, you know, this third category because that's really what we've been talking around for a long time. And he's just really good about, you know, bringing, you know, to a concise and clear concept. Again, though, I would like to comment about the issue of emergency because in the, in the federal law, it's really spelled out. There are only certain things that qualify to be an emergency ordinance, and this doesn't necessarily need that. Actually, it doesn't meet those requirements. The other concern that I had is this morning on C-SPAN, one of the topics was, how concerned are you about the federal debt? It's 22 trillion by some counts, 400 trillion by other counts. But whatever number you choose, it's very large. And it is, you know, it's the interest on the debt that kills you. You know, you can buy a home for a certain price, but by the time you've paid off the mortgage interest, you're going to be paying at least, you know, that purchase price again, if not double or triple. And all of you are too young to remember the days around 1980. We had signed a contract to purchase a house in '78, but we didn't get to closing until '80. We went from like 5% interest. We nailed, we were able to snag a mortgage for 12% and it roared on up to 20 and 22% interest on your mortgage payment. It was just crushing. So your children and my children and you guys, because you're a lot younger than I'm, you're going to be bearing an interest load that is just intolerable.
Ms. Johnson, please summarize.
Thank you. And the, no later than 2030, the, as it stands now, the interest on the debt will be equal to the entire revenue of the country.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 5319 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5319.
Bill Number 5319, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, fourth-quarter fund transfer, and supplementary appropriations.
Any additional discussion after the public hearing? Seeing none. We do have an amendment, amendments, and again, as a reminder, this is an emergency ordinance. According to our rules, we can't vote on this this evening. Let's go here. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1, this increases the appropriation for the Office of Administrative Hearings by $12,000.
Is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second?
Second.
This is administration requests, if you'd like to hear, Mr. Barron?
Sure. This adds the Office of Administration an appropriation to them for $12,000. This reflects a change in healthcare and some additional consulting services.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What consulting services? Mr. Barron?
I'm going to defer to Office of Budget.
Again, for the record, Stephen Teroux from the Office of Budget. This is specifically for outside legal counsel. If there's a conflict of interest in the Office of Administrative Hearings, they have to hire outside legal counsel to hear those cases.
So who do we hire and for how much?
I'd have to get back to on who we hire, but I believe they spent somewhere around $4,000 for the whole fiscal year 19 budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Sixty affirmative, one of the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2, this eliminates the additional appropriation for the Fire Department of $183,000.
Is there a motion to adopt?
It's moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This is Councilwoman Fiedler. Would you like to discuss this amendment?
Yes. Mr. Teroux, I just want to thank you for answering my numerous questions on this today. This amendment is based on the blue letter where we have an excess of over a million in this department, but my understanding is it's almost a technicality, this request, because the project that is intended, the Training Academy repairs, was not in the FY19 budget. So can that project happen with the money that is in excess in that department?
Go ahead.
Stephen Teroux, Office of Budget, yes. The Fire Department would be able to absorb this $183,000 within their current appropriation authority. The point of bringing this downstairs in front of the county council is basically to get a vote of approval to move forward because this was not a planned expenditure in the FY19 budget. Therefore, because it's such a large dollar amount and a new initiative that the Fire Department's undertaking, this was an effort by the administration and by the Budget Office to bring it in front of the county council before we move forward. So this is an existing contract that we have that if the council said, yes, let's go ahead and do this project, we go ahead and move forward with these repairs.
To pile on to Mr. Teroux's comment, this goes directly to some comments made earlier about making sure that the council sees new spending. And so that's the reason why we added it, but to the Budget Office's point, the Fire Department can absorb it. in the past where department spent money that wasn't appropriated and the auditor's office reprimanded them for it. So we wanted to make sure that this was clear, but we've spoken to Madam Auditor. Situations are different, and we are gonna accept this amendment. But we wanted to make sure it was clear that folks knew that the reason that this was brought before the council was to make sure that when the administration is spending $183,000, that it came before the council.
Understood, and thank you. And for the record, I support the repairs. I just want to have that said. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm gonna start with Madam Auditor. Madam Auditor, on your blue letter, the Fire Department, it looks like you're indicating that there's about $1.2 million that can be cut from this supplemental request on the Fire Department. Is that, am I getting that right?
No. So they put in a request for an additional $183,000, and what I'm saying is they have an excess of a million dollars in the department that can, that can absorb that $183,000.
So should we cut...
So they don't need the $183,000.
So should we cut 8:17? The million less the 183?
I understand what you're saying, but I think the fourth-quarter transfer is usually to cut, is to add appropriations, so I was recommending to not add the appropriation. I don't know that at this point, you have the authority to cut appropriate, additional appropriations, appropriations that have already been approved in that budget. So this would be additional appropriations that haven't been approved yet in that budget?
I got you. Okay.
Does that make sense?
Hmm.
Do you want me to speak on the other incident, or...
Is it related to this amendment? We can only focus on this amendment?
Okay. Well, he brought us up that I had a concern, so I just, I didn't know if you wanted to hear from that. The other incident dealt with Department of Inspections impairments, and they kept repeatedly putting in their budget a request for scanning documents, and then were using them for renovating. So that's what we had an issue with in the past, and I just wanted to say, you can put it in without a request for an appropriation.
We just wanted to make sure the council saw it, and for the record, we would oppose a million-dollar cut to the Fire Department.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
I just wanted to clarify. Could admins state their position on this amendment?
Oh, we will accept the amendment. We just wanted to make sure it was on the record, the reason behind bringing the 183 into the, into 5319.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this amendment? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 2 is adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 3.
Amendment Number 3, this reduces the Department of Public Works' general fund appropriation contractual services by $200,000.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm gonna ask that Madam Auditor, because at her request with the administration, that's why I'm introducing this, if she could speak on this, please.
Okay. So they requested an additional appropriation of $400,000 for the Department of Public Works. I determined that they did not need that additional request, and that, and so I had recommended that they, they cut the additional request for $400,000 in discussion with the Budget Office. They agreed to, that they didn't need $200,000. So this amendment is for the $200,000 that they agreed to.
Mr. Barron, would you like to respond to the auditor's comments?
For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. We will accept this amendment. I do want to put on the record, the risk of putting the originally requested amount in the, into DPW's budget, it would just revert back to fund balance if it wasn't used. If, over the next, and it's only two weeks, but if over the next two weeks, some major unanticipated expense comes, and the department doesn't have the resources, that, then it could result in the department violating the rule in the charter and overspending their appropriation. We hope that wasn't, won't happen. We are comfortable with the cut recommended by the auditor, but I just want to make sure that it's on the record, that we are, we were more comfortable with the amount originally requested.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number 3?
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 3 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 4.
Amendment Number 4, this reduces the additional appropriation for the Police Department capital outlay by $240,000.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the auditor again to speak on this amendment in discussion with the administration.
Okay. So for this amendment, they had originally requested $500,000 in personal services and an additional $340,000 in capital outlay. Our review disclosed that they had actually an excess in personal services of $660,000. They subsequently agreed they had an excess of $340,000 regarding capital outlay. We had a discussion, and the FAST Fund had additional information come in, and the administration agreed they only needed $100,000 for that. So this amendment is, in accordance with their agreement, to reduce, let me just back up and say, we also both agreed that they had too much, they had too much in contractual services. So in order to offset the issue with contractual services, they wanted to also keep their personal services. So this is basically just reducing the amount that the administration agreed to, which is reducing the capital outlay from 340 to 100.
Administration?
Sure. Thank you, Pete Barron with the administration. I will just repeat the same comments I made for the previous amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number 4?
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.